That you've given this council and our mayor. And we just pray your blessing on everything that goes on this evening. We ask for grace in speech. Lord, we pray for insight and understanding as issues are brought up and deliberated on. Pray for your wisdom to rule in all things with impartiality. And, Lord, we thank you for the powers that you put in place, all authorities here, because you allow it. Lord, we are blessed here and thank you for those who have stepped up to serve and ask your blessing not only on them this evening, but on their homes and families in this town as well. It's in Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
At this time, we would have comments from visitors if there are any out there that would like to speak to the council. This would be a five-minute allotted time. Seeing no one come, we'll move on. The consent agenda is up for approval. We've got seven items on the table here. Is there anything that would like to be discussed or talked about?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to see the Director of Administration report for April be removed.
So we can talk about it. Cool.
Would you like me to go ahead and read those out loud for anybody out there that doesn't have the agenda in front of them? Let's go over those. We'll be fast. So we have approval of the city council meeting minutes of April 23rd, approval of the city council meeting minutes of May 14th, approval of the Director of Administration report, which will be removed, reappointment of Judy Shaneman to the Historic Preservation Commission, reappointment of Adrian Lindsay to the Human Rights Commission, reappointment of Don Stasell to the Human Rights Commission, and reappointment of Robert Wilson to the Park Board.
So with the exception of C, I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any more discussion on that? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Thank you. So we'll talk about the Director's Report now?
Okay, I have several little things in here, and I don't know. On the very first, planning and protective services, you know, I looked through at the fees that we're charging. And my question is, are we even covering our cost when we charge those fees? And when was the last time that we looked at those fees?
Probably looked at them the last time, probably eight to 10 years ago. We did, and at that time, we raised them. We are much cheaper than other communities when it comes to issuing building permissions, construction permits. We don't have any type of impact fee. You know, an impact fee is a fee that a developer would pay to improve streets in the neighborhood or to improve some other public infrastructure because they're adding a, I don't want to say it, they're adding infrastructure. A lot of people have, that don't have the quality and the quantity of water that we have, it might be $5,000 impact fee to get a water meter. We don't have any of that. We're very fortunate to have some of that. But if that is something the city council would like to look at and consider. I know 20, 25 years ago, when I was in my former position, the building permit was 1% of construction cost. Now, we did have some people that maybe fudge on what they thought the house was going to cost or what it was going to cost to build, but it was 1%. We are far, far below 1%.
Well, and I just look at, I mean, we had three new homes for $370,000 and $247.52 for fees. That seems really, really low. And then we had one garage shed or carport, and that was $23,500. And the price on that was $69.58. That, I just certainly think that we should look to at least try to start working towards covering our costs.
Good point.
So I'll move through this quickly so we don't. The next page is the animal shelter. Again, I look at fees. If I look at this correctly, we collected more in fees for the animal shelter than we did for the construction. I don't know whether that's right, wrong, or indifferent, but there's a valid thing I think to look at. And I'm not saying any of those fees are crazy at $35 or $40 apiece. Onward we move. To the Parks and Rec. You know, I looked through here, and my hat goes off, I think his name is Jamie, am I correct, Clay?
What page is that?
Yeah.
Page seven. When we look at everything that's happened out at the golf course and what Jamie, in his short period that he's been here, great job, and I want to thank him for that. So, you know, you look through the rounds, what he brought in, he almost covered his expenses, losses for the year in one month, in the month of April. Great job. So I just wanted to recognize him for that. And I think that's it. That's it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Paul, you're on that one. Can you talk about the water tower? Or someone who was exclamation that was in here about the leak?
The leak? The tower down by the Ford dealership in the stand pipe, there is a leak on the, there's a, in that water tower, there's a pipe within a pipe. Okay? The pipe you see holding the sphere up is not, does not have water in it. It's got a pipe to go, well, that pipe that runs up the middle has a leak. So that pipe has been drained probably a week and a half now. And we getting some contractors in to give us an estimate and to review the damage to it. I think we got one estimate, and it's a little over 20 grand.
And it's basically the spot that, if you remember, we cut it and raised it. I think it's right there.
Is it another raise?
Yep. But that's been, how long ago's that been?
2005, no, seven. Seven. So, oh, and the report, it said somewhere between 20 and 40. We're looking at a little over 20 for the first estimate that we have.
So we don't know yet why?
Just a weld.
Okay, just corrosion in the weld?
A weld after 15 years went bad. It's not leaking a lot. And I think it's, I think the estimate given to me was like four or five gallons a minute, which really is.
That's a lot.
To me, that's a lot.
Not from a water. Not from a city water department standpoint. It is.
I'm freaking out over it.
How did they find that? It's my question.
It's running down because the leaks on the pipe. And then that pipe is wrapped with insulation. It's running down between the insulation and the pipe to the, basically to the floor, to the interior of the water tower. And when they started, you know, going in to check some of the stuff that's in the bottom of the water tower, and they began stepping in water, it's like, hey, we got a problem.
Gotcha.
You answer my question?
I have a question.
Yes.
Inspecting the pool. So are we ready to open our pool, or how are we doing with our pool?
Open.
Everything's okay? We're still up and running?
Get your bathing suit out.
Got water.
Your wet suit. It's cold.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's cold. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on that? I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Director of Administration report.
Second.
Any other questions on that? All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
No? Okay, that's a done deal. Thank you. Okay, presentation and acceptance of the financial report for April. Ms. Holzschlag usually fills us in a little bit here.
Well, I can tell you, we've recorded three months of sales tax, and we're up 3.25% over the prior year. So that's a good start. Typically, I don't give you any increases or decreases till after we have at least one quarter posted. I've noticed or noted anything out of the ordinary in the notes. Probably the strangest thing you're seeing in the financials is that in the electric fund, capital outlay is an addition, not a subtraction, in the month of April, month to date. And the reason for that is there had been $23,000, $26,000 worth of wire charged out to the Business 54 project, and it was returned to the purchasing warehouse. So we had to add it back in, just in case anybody looks and says, it's been a mistake. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Call for a motion.
There's no objections, I move we accept the financial report.
Any other questions on that? All those in favor?
Yes.
All right. Okay, unfinished business. The Parks and Rec Community Center, we've got some new information here in front of us.
... provided. The yellow packet is just some general information that we'll probably end up talking about once the bids come in and we start discussing what we can afford and what we can not afford. So that's something for you to review over the next month or so. We did meet with the architects through phone conference this afternoon. We set a bid deadline of July 11th. So we should have the numbers on the community center back to you by July 23rd. I believe that's the next meeting date after that. So we've established the deadline. What I wanted to share with you tonight is some pictures of what the community center should look like if we decide to build it.
When we decide to build it?
When we decide to build it, that's right. This first picture is the front entrance as it faces State and Eighth Street. So it's kind of a, it's a metal building, it has some blue in it, kind of city blue. Also incorporates some brick, brick in the design. These are just different views of the exterior of the building. You see the west side, and again, the front side at the top. And the bottom is the rear of the building and the, I guess would be the north side of the building. So you see the banquet room at the corner with the outdoor patio on the north side. This is the upper level. It's kind of a blueprint. I won't go through all this. We'll show some other pictures that show it a little bit better. But that's the upper level. This is the lower level with the basketball courts, fitness center, and the turf field house. And this is kind of a cutout view of what the building will look like. On the right side there, you can see the turf field house. You see the basketball volleyball courts. Large room in the middle is an activity room. On the upper left side is offices and another activity room, actually two activity rooms in that area. In the center, towards the top, is the banquet room and a couple of classrooms in that area. This is the view as you walk in. Registration desk, check-in desk is right there. The bottom picture, you're looking down the hallway. There's some classrooms on your left. As you look down the hallway, you can see the cardio room, and you can see the mezzanine that overlooks the basketball courts and the field house. This is the classroom that was on your left there. As you come in, you can divide it into two classrooms. Has occurred when it comes down the middle, so you can have a couple of different activities going on in each room. You can fold the desks up, move them out of the way, and you can have some physical activity in there if you wanted to. As you're coming in the main corridor, again, this is across from the classrooms. Looking down a corridor that goes to the large activity room and a couple of small activity rooms. And the office complex would be behind that wall on your right. This is the larger activity room. It'll have a concrete floor, unfinished ceiling. We'll use it for a variety of activities. We'll have wrestling in there, tumbling, cheerleading. We can bring mats in, we can roll mats up and have all kinds of activities in that room. This is a smaller activity room. That window is facing the south side, facing towards the scout cabin. So it's just, it's one of the smaller rooms. You could have classes in there, you could have aerobics, yoga, things like that. This is the mezzanine, looking back towards the front entrance, that main corridor. You see we have a concession stand on the right. This is an elevated area. To your right would be the field house, and to your left would be the basketball courts. You'd be overlooking the basketball courts from that view. And this is the cardio room we talked about. In this room, we'll have some treadmills, we'll have bikes, steppers, things like that. The windows look out to the east side of the park, towards the lake, towards the skate park. And then in the bottom picture, on the right side, there'll also be some windows that look out over the basketball arena. Those aren't in this picture. And this is what the basketball arena looks like. It has retractable basketball goals, it has one full-size basketball court and two shorter basketball courts going across it. It also has two retractable volleyball goals. It has a curtain that'll divide the center, so you can have activities going on on both sides. And then it has the two-lane walk and jogging track that goes around the outside of that. And then it has bleacher seating for about 600. And you can retract those bleachers back and use as much or as little as the bleachers that you want. And again, you can see the mezzanine at the top that overlooks the basketball area. And that blue wall to the right is the cardio room that we talked about. This is the field house. You do a variety of sporting activities. It's going to be artificial turf. It's going to have retractable batting cages. It'll also have a net that retracts, so if there's ball-type activities going on on the turf, people can still walk around the track and jog around the track without any interference. And then again, you can see the mezzanine in the cardio room wall. This is looking, if you're in the basketball arena, this is looking down the track. The fitness center is to the right, under the mezzanine, and the stairway is going upstairs to the main corridor or to your left. So as you come downstairs, you'll see the fitness center right in front of you. This is the banquet room. Again, it's got some patio doors. You can go out onto the patio, you can have outdoor seating, you can have indoor seating. And you can access this room from the outside, or you can access it from the community center side. So you'll be able to shut off the community center if you just had a banquet room in the evening, and you want to keep that separate. Again, that's just the cutout. Does anybody have any questions on where some of those rooms are? It went through pretty fast. Any questions yet?
In that banquet room, is there a kitchen area?
There is. It would be off to your right. Let's, if I can point to it, let's hit this.
Oh, okay. I see it. I was looking.
What's your seating capacity on that, Clay?
In the banquet room, it's about 140. So up in this general area.
Okay.
Kind of right around that wall there.
Okay.
This is where the kitchen would be. There'd be kitchen and a separate restroom and some storage.
Thank you.
So Clay, on the lower level, is there an entrance to get into where the basketball, i.e. we have somebody in a wheelchair?
There's an elevator.
Okay, there is an elevator.
There is an elevator, yeah. It's right there in the corner of the mezzanine.
As long as it's in there, I'm good with it?
Yeah. And you'll, if you want, if we wanted to, we could allow access from, there's two or three doors on the backside also. The backside also has like an overhead garage door. If we wanted to bring large equipment in there, we could do that as well.
Some shower facilities?
There are changing rooms. Everything we heard from the architects and the consultants is that locker rooms were a waste of space. There was a lot of space, but people really didn't like the wide-open showers anymore. So we have three changing rooms. In the changing rooms, you have a shower, bathroom, sink, and a bench to sit on.
That's what I wanted to make sure of, was that there were shower facilities? But that's going to be all the way upstairs?
It will be.
In the middle?
Yeah, because we got, we have some day lockers that'll be across from those changing rooms, so people could put stuff in, in cubbies or lockers. We'll also have some cell phone lockers, where people could leave their keys and cell phones in that main hallway.
Downstairs is just going to be bathroom facilities?
Downstairs will be bathroom only. There'll also be some lockers, small lockers down there, too. And throughout the upper and lower level and the main hallway and down on the lower level, there's some gates that you can pull across the hallway to secure various areas and keep people from going into different areas if you wanted to. Any other questions?
This is, this will be next steps opportunity, but what's going to be the opportunity outside this community center in the future?
Well, what, the way it's laid out is, let's see if we can go all the way back here to the beginning.
I'm not, I'm not seeing an exit from the lower level.
This, this right here shows where a future outdoor pool would be added. There's a hallway, and the reason we put it that area because, and that's part of the reason the changing rooms are where they're at, because pool users could access the changing rooms from that hallway going out to the pool area.
So coming off the right side of the, as you're looking at the building?
So we're going to be almost to the road that goes through the parks there? Okay. If you go straight out the back of the basketball and the field house?
Yeah, you will, there.
There's maybe parking and then the road.
Yeah, it's pretty tight in there. And we kind of figure that's probably going to be staff parking or just overflow parking. We probably won't develop the parking to the north, it's near the worship pits. Probably won't do that right away. We'll just kind of see if there's a need for that parking. I mean, that's kind of a parking lot anyway, it could use a little touch-up, but it's a usable parking area for right now. But yeah, there'd be, there'd be access. If we wanted to look down the road, it's set up where we could secure different areas and possibly make it a 24-hour fitness-type thing if we wanted to do that, if that was something that the community wanted.
On the expense and revenue side, Clay, what's our projected staffing at this place? Do we know how many people we're going to be having? I mean, it's not going to be a seasonal, obviously.
No, I mean, it will depend a lot on part-time, seasonal, college kids, high school kids. We've kind of run through the different scenarios of what a budget would look like, what a business plan would look like, how it was staffed. I would think maybe you might need one more full-time person, maybe someone that you'd call a building supervisor to kind of pick up the nights or weekends, things like that. But I think you can, you can manage it with a lot of seasonal, part-time help.
You're.
Big place to clean. Yeah, well, janitor, we'd have to look at that, because that's going to be a issue. I don't know if you could contract that out, or if we'll have to hire a full-time janitor. But yeah, that's something we've considered, too.
You're talking going out for bids in July?
No.
Or it's coming back in July?
Bid deadline July 11th.
Okay. So we get the bids back, and they come in reasonable, and we elect to go ahead and build this. How long before it's functional? Any guess?
They're saying construction time of nine to 12 months.
Okay. So the fall of 2020, essentially?
I would say that's probably a good, if you got started within probably early fall and you had good weather, I think they could probably have it done by next fall.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? Thank you, Clay.
Both projects are going out to bid, correct?
Yeah, and it's something we're talking a little bit about is, and I'll just refer you to page, in the yellow packet, page eight, the very last page. We've talked a little bit in-house about, you know, putting the community center out for bid and then putting the two big pieces of the baseball complex out for bid. And when I say big pieces, I'm talking about the dirt moving and the fence building. And maybe doing that in phases. Because we've accumulated, over the past three years, we've accumulated, probably by the end of this year, we'll be about $800,000. Maybe we finance the community center and we put the $800,000 as far as it'd go towards the baseball complex. So that's an option that we could talk about once all the numbers are in. But, and I think a lot of the Phase Two and the Phase Three, some of that can be done with city labor. It'll be slower, it'll take, it'll take longer, but, you know, I think our staff is capable of pouring sidewalks and putting in light poles and helping with the irrigation, things like that. But again, that'd be a slower process than if a contractor would do it.
Well, you only said the fencing out loud, but it is the fields and the dirt work.
Yeah, and it's, it's the fields, the fence, the grass, irrigation. We're getting to the point where they're almost usable.
And that's going to be part of this bid packet that goes out now?
They'll be separate. They'll be separate. So they may have a different date, but the community center is being bid separately.
Understand. But they're both going out simultaneously?
Close together.
As two separate projects?
Yes. So you'll have numbers for both to look at.
Okay. But Phase One, what will come back for the baseball softball complex will be all of Phase One, correct?
All of Phase One.
Preparation, excavation, fields, and batting cage construction.
And then we'll, and we'll work to get you some more exact figures on Phase Two and Phase Three. Because a lot of that we can estimate in-house based on past projects and things like that.
I guess what I'm, my hesitation is I was assuming, complete assumption, that we were going to bid what would be Phase One and Phase Two. Maybe it's separate phases, but it would still all go out for bid so that we would understand the true pricing. And then we could look to see, is this something the city could take on?
And we can do it that way if you like, yes. We can do it that way.
Well, I guess, how confident? I'm concerned about confidence in the pricing, and I'm concerned about the availability of the staffing that would do Phase Two, even if we think we could afford it. You know, what are we adding to the timeline if now we have to work it in with everything else that city staff is doing versus knowing what it was going to cost us for a contractor to do it?
Well, and we can do that. You don't want to bid too much of it out and not award the bid. I mean, that's something you don't want to get into a lot.
And I understand.
You can do Phase Two as an alternate.
Phase Two as an alternate. Phase One is, Phase One and then Phase Two is an alternate. Let them come back and say, this is the man-hours, this is the pricing, this is what we think it'll take, and this is how long it'll take us to do it.
Okay.
And then we can look at that as an alternate to say, well, do we have the money? Do we have the bodies? Do we have the time that we could do this in the same amount of time for the same amount of money or less?
You know, we can bid all the phases out as alternates, if you wanted to do that.
I mean, we're going to end up bidding out Phase Four anyway, the concession building, but I'm not sure what your timeline has for the concession building. Is that a year-one item, or is that a year-two, three?
I think you're going to have to have restrooms. Restrooms are very important, and that would be part of the concession building.
So that'll need to be, they don't need to be there day one of operations, right? Sidewalks will need to be there day one of operations. Sidewalks will need to be there day one of operations. I would suggest bidding phase one through phase four with two, three and four as alternates.
We can do that.
That way we can award whatever phase we want to and they understand that when they're going into the bidding.
Yeah, we can, we can do that very easily.
That'd be my personal preference. That way we know exactly what we're looking at.
Okay. Any other questions?
Anybody else? Thank you, Clay.
Thank you, Clay.
Moving on to new business, we have Michelle Payne here with Coway Head Start. Hey, buddy.
Hi, Michelle.
It's our classmate, me and you guys.
Sorry.
Bunch of youngins here.
Yeah, right.
Well, as you know, I work for a Coway Head Start. I'm a teacher. And what we like to do is we like to have family events for our kids and our families. Give them opportunities to spend time with their kids that they might not normally take upon themselves any other time. So one of the events that I like to do is the splash pad. And we've, this will be our fourth year to do it. In the past, I've just had email, Clay, and get it approved just to have the fee for the pavilion waived. Since we're a nonprofit, all of our money that we receive from the government has been matched by equal grant money or donations and so forth. So I'm hoping that you all will waive the fee for us for this year. I checked the available date of July 26th. It was open as of last week. I am hoping it's still open. But we are hoping to do it on July 26th from, we usually do four to seven. That gives us a chance to open it up. And it's just the main concession. We don't need the gazebo or anything like that. And we'll bring the food there so we don't need the concession stand to cook or anything. We'll cook it at the center and bring it to the splash pad. And hopefully, I don't know if you need to know, we're hoping to still get a fire truck, a police car, ambulance and another race car. If you know anybody.
My racing days are over.
So, so that kids can, you know, get in there and experience sitting in the vehicles and stuff. They did it last year. They enjoyed the heck out of it. Everybody had a good time, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
There is no objections. I make a motion, we waive the fees for the Head Start program.
Second?
Can I ask one more thing?
Go ahead.
Do I need to come and ask you all about this as an ongoing?
I think it's every year now.
Every year.
I had to ask.
Well, you can't be special. We make that for everybody.
I told her to try. I said it probably wouldn't happen, but you can always try.
Well, maybe I will later, but I'm partially head stuck.
So I hope you get our handkerchief in March.
Councilman Brown?
I just have one question. Is, is the splash pad at that point obviously open to your, your families? And is it still open to the public at that point?
Oh, yes, yeah.
So there, it's not, you're not asking for any kind of private?
No, no. We actually, some of the homeless that hang out down there, we feed them.
No, I, I mean literally the splash pad itself. Because obviously you're going to-
It's just our kids are going to enter, enter me with everybody else that's in there.
Great.
There you go.
So the pavilions that they're able to reserve.
Is there any more discussion on this?
Nope.
Call for the question. All favor say yes?
Yes.
All opposed, no?
Thank you, guys.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. You can give me an ambulance? But last year they were busy and I understood and so are our friends.
We, we can get, we can get an ambulance when they're not busy.
That would be awesome. So I'll be, I'll be contacting our police chief and the body department. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question. Not for, not here, but for Clay. Do we have a rate for the splash pad? If I wanted to, I can rent the swimming pool if I chose to rent the splash pad?
We do not. Typically, we don't reserve things like the splash pad, the trail. The only things we reserve are the shelters, scout cabin and the pool for pool parties. We, we'd probably negotiate something if somebody really wanted to do something. But our preference is to leave those areas open to the public. So even when we're having the street fair or Relay for Life, the splash pad and things like that are mostly open to the public.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on. Mr. Dunlap, if you would, come up and introduce. We've got a rep, a rep from Burns and McDonald's going to speak to us. VIP.
I think most of you all probably met Phil before. He used to work for MPUA. And he was the water and wastewater guru that we leaned on a whole lot. Well, Burns and Mack stole him from MPUA probably about a year and a half ago. But one of the last projects I would think that Phil worked on while I was at MPUA was in conjunction with Burns and Mack on the smoke testing that was done with the drone here at the city of Fulton. And unless Phil knows of something else, I think this was the first drone smoke testing done in the state of Missouri. So late, still ain't as thunder, but, but this is Phil Wallslack with Burns and Mack.
Thank you.
Good evening. So my name is Phil Wallslack. I'm with Burns and McDonald's now. You'll get to see some pictures when I wasn't with Burns and Mack. In fact, you are the good luck charm. I think I was here on a Wednesday and my interview was on Friday with Burns and Mack. So thank you very much for releasing me and letting me move and go down to Joplin. I'm going to spend 10 or 12 minutes here. I noticed on the agenda, Mr. Johnson, it was very nice. It said from one to 15 minutes on the, I, I can't do it in one, but I can get you pretty close. So I'm going to time myself here. So I want to talk about a project we did about a year and a half ago with some drones in the city of Fulton to look at your most expensive city asset, and that's your sewer system. No other asset compares in value to your sewer system. And we used a drone to quickly assess some of the areas that might be having what's called inflow and infiltration, extraneous water that enters your system when it rains. And it's been raining enough here lately, hasn't it? So we're going to show, I'm going to show you some drone footage in a couple, couple minutes here. So what the drone does, most of you see drones on TV and don't even realize you're looking at drone footage anymore because they're so prevalent. So when you look at your city hall and when you do this to it, it has a different complexion, right? When you get to fly above this and look at city hall this way. So in a second, we're going to have drones flying up and down the city streets looking for smoke from a smoke testing operation. And that smoke is trying to find areas that are appropriately connected to the system and those that are not. We use smoke testing because it's inexpensive, fast, quick, way to assess your sewer system. These are the things we're looking for in the little diagram on the left there. You see the smoke blower and you'll see one in a second in action. It blows smoke, a non-toxic smoke, through your system. And it, the smoke finds a way to come to the surface in places that we call defects, things that are not running or operating properly. Cross connections with the stormwater system, floor drains, abandoned service caps and manholes or some of those. These are the main purposes. The first two are really for you, locate cross connections between stormwater and sanitary sewer. We're trying to keep those two things separate and looking for defects in the gravity system. So these are some of your guys. So we worked in combination with the city staff. So city staff and us, hand in glove, working on this project to try to blow that smoke into the sewer system and then find in the buildings, especially downtown, where it's coming out of. You'll see we're employing the electric department right there on the left. And then you can see the drone coming right at us. She's right about there. It's going to come all the way and land right in front of us. That's, excuse me for not knowing, that's First Baptist, Second Baptist Church there?
First Christian Church.
First on the, on the right-hand side. So this is what it looks like from the ground. You've got the guys blowing the smoke. You've got the electric crew looking up on the roofs of the buildings and then the drones surveying the work over top. So I think this is about a 40-second little video. And you'll see, for those of you who haven't played, played with drones, they're fairly small. And they're kind of innocuous. They don't really look like much. And we had a very good operator who came in for this job and he could fly it into some very tight spaces. And this sort of sounds like a bumblebee up close.
Yeah, I saw it, I saw it.
No, no, we don't do that. Councilman, no turning the drone on its side. Okay, that's bad. So, you know, there she is. That, that's all she is right there.
Yep. That's cool.
So we're going to see in a second what that looks like when you fly overhead. And sorry for the silent video part of it, but the drone has no music with it. So we're flying up and down the streets. We're looking for things like smoke coming out of buildings here. I'm going to put on my glasses so I can see and point it to you when it comes. And usually I turn the lights down nice and low, but there's one right there. So that's a good thing, okay? These are good things. When you see the smoke coming out of the pipes, and there should be one right over there as it comes closer to you, you're going to see city staff, or that's our project manager right there, Cliff Kate. Lacey Herschvogel right there. She now is your MPU representative. Mr. Dunlap Jr. right there in the bottom, who was an intern for Burns and McDonald's. And your electric crew, that's Mr. Dunlap on the top there. And that's either James or Mike. I can't really tell his best side there, but for sure. And the drone's going to turn around and work the other side of the street. So we're looking for places where the smoke is coming out. But then you'll see Darryl directing some, one of his staffers to walk over to something that looks like a problem from one of these building tops. And so you can see how fast we're moving. And if you had to do this on foot, there's Darryl right there, right there. And there's one of your staffers and they're looking at this spot right here. So that's a, a potential bad spot for us. So where it's, where the roof is draining right into the sanitary sewer and we don't really want that. Okay? And then I think there's another here coming up. So that's a good thing. So see how fast, otherwise we'd be walking up and down these stairs all day long trying to find this smoke. So it's a really quick and fast and safe way to analyze the sewer system. And that place has pretty good patty melts as of half an hour ago. And there's our drone operator and there's me. And we're taking pictures of the drone, taking pictures of what it's supposed to be doing. So that these buildings here are very tough to look for sanitary sewer defects. Very difficult to walk through those buildings, up onto the roofs and figure out where stuff is. And you're going to see the drone in a second here. You're not going to see the drone, but the drone's essentially going to turn on edge to find this next defect. It's going to be right down in this corner here. And you'll turn, see the drone move forward and back and then position itself to figure out what is going on in this, in this rough line.
Phil, were you watching this on a monitor as it was going or?
I'm not that good, but the guy, the young man who ran the drone, he doesn't even look at the drone. He just has a little computer screen right in front of him and he sees everything. And so we're watching instantly when this is happening. So he's calling out, hey, you need to look at this, hey, you need to look at that. So that building right there, this piece right here, we're blowing smoke in the system and it's coming up right there. And that's probably not a good thing because here's the roof guttering coming right down. So it's either broken or it does go into the sewer or it doesn't go into the sewer. So that's an opportunity for us to go climb that one building and figure out what's going on. And see how fast, we looked at probably 40-
The tree's not there anymore either.
Hmm?
The tree's not there anymore.
Sorry. But you can see 40, 50 buildings and we do this, this video is entirety, four minutes and 40 seconds. This would take a long time for us to go by foot and do this. So you can see how far away the other smoke blower crew is, a long way away from where we were. So two or three guys blowing smoke in the system. We're analyzing all those buildings in literally five minutes. The drone is so fast that we can't keep up with it. And you'll notice most of those buildings, some of those buildings don't have, you know, it wouldn't be safe up there wandering around where, you know, the edge of the building is just right over the street. And it's, you know, sloped in the wrong direction. In other words, the direct, the water's going to flow in one direction. And there's another one, right? It's a little hard to see in the dark. So that building there is working really well. Okay. Unfortunately, sometimes it's right in front of you where your problems are and they're hard to spot, even though they're right in front of you. That's the thing about inflow and infiltration of sewer systems. There's a joint every six feet or so. So the smoke blower is right here. And where it's coming out is right there and it should not be coming out there. And I think this is, and it should not be coming out the curb inlets. So this is an area where the storm system is connected to the sanitary system. And so we're trying to alleviate that and, and fix that problem.
Darryl? Darryl, didn't we, didn't we fix that one?
Yeah. So the idea of all this, analyze part of the system, figure out where the leaks are, fix them, verify that you fixed them, come back in a different basin, we call it, do the same over and over and over again. This is not a project, this is a program. This is a way of doing life that's different. This is like going on a diet for the rest of your life, kind of different. It's not just one and done. So we keep this process going to keep your infrastructure in good shape. And of course, there had to be a little comedy with me. You know, there's me laying in the curb, laying on the sidewalk and the grass has smoke coming out of it. So that's the sanitary sewer system, we thought, but there's no sewer there. So there's this old stormwater system in that sidewalk that's pouring out, you know, gas from, from our, from our smoke blowers. And we didn't really know where it was and how it was connected to the system. So it's a good thing to find. It's kind of like archaeology. And that's a wrap. Johnson? Thought I do. So usually this presentation goes an hour and a half. So I've done it for an hour and a half and two hours, both, so.
We, we, Phil worked with us. Phil basically did 90% of it. We did the last 10. But we submitted this smoke testing project to the MML as a, for an innovation award at the last MML conference. Sadly, or I guess it's coming up.
Coming up, yes.
We did not get it.
Correct.
They gave it to somebody else. Somebody, the voters thought somebody else was a little more innovative than us.
And we'll get to see that here in a couple of months to see where they really were. But when they extended the deadline, I knew we were, I knew it was feats up for us when the deadline get extended by another month because we hit the deadline and-
And Ramona from the MML, she actually called me one day and said, we can't give it to Fulton every year. Every year.
Right.
So then that's kind of when I knew. I don't care what we submitted, they're not going to call our name this year.
That's a shame.
So we won three innovation awards total and two of them were back-to-back.
Several.
Yeah.
But we've worked with Phil now for, I don't know, 20 years probably. How long were you at MPUA?
A decade, so 13 years exactly.
And we've worked with him a long time. He's done a lot of great things for us. You know, but now he's with Burns and Mack and now he likes to send a bill when he-
But tonight is free just for you.
The difference between Burns and Mack and MPUA is they want to send a bill. But we still use him and we still love him and he is, he is such an expert when it comes to sanitary sewers across the state. I think even the Missouri DNR would be hesitant to do some things if Phil said, that's not a good idea.
Thank you.
Well-respected across the state.
Appreciate that. Any other questions of me? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. My pleasure.
Who was running the drone?
I don't really know his name. We just call him E. So he, you know, E was running the drone. I think his first name's Ernest, but he's very talented. Yeah, he doesn't talk to people, he talks to the machine.
Was he your daughter or something involving?
And my daughter was the one who was filming the drone filming you.
Oh, okay.
So, we have, yes. So, she's the one who put everything together for me.
It's a class project or something.
Yes.
Multi-generational.
Yeah, she could teach her dad how to change your ringtone. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Okay, September and December, we're gonna need to change a meeting. And this is pretty typical from what we do every year. So, we'll be changing the second meeting in December.
We'll stick with the second meeting of September, which is the twenty-fourth, and then we'll do one meeting in December, which will be the seventeenth.
Everyone good with that?
Yeah, so we would entertain a motion for that.
I make a motion that we accept the change in our meetings on the twenty-fourth of September and December the seventeenth.
Second.
Thank you.
Everybody good with that? Any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? No? Council concerns? I'll start on my left. Councilwoman Seibacher?
I have none.
Councilman Simmons?
I have nothing.
Councilwoman McCook?
Nothing tonight.
Wow.
Yeah.
Councilman Stone?
Just thank you. The city resources that were used to assist after the tornado and the flooding that's going on in South Callaway and in Jefferson City, it was a huge benefit. I work in that community, and it was devastating of the stuff that happened that night. But the response that we partnered with them was wonderful, and it's something that we must continue to do every opportunity we get.
Yeah, thank you for that. Thank you. That, I totally agree. Moving on, Councilman Braun?
Lo, I do have one other quick question. The September meeting, the September tenth meeting that we've canceled, was gonna be a work session. Is there any concern that we need to move that work session to that second meeting in September?
We will investigate. Do we need to do that or not?
Okay, thank you. That's what I was thinking, was we'd be getting close to budget and if we needed a work session.
We had the energy.
Or we can just, just put it as an item on the agenda in the second meeting.
However we need to do it. I just wanted to acknowledge.
Start the budget now.
Yeah.
You know what?
Start the budget now.
Start now.
Don't you have it done, Rob? Robert, you heard that one?
Get moving.
That's all I have, I think.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Braun?
I just have one thing, and it's, I have not heard from any of my constituents, but it drives me nuts. We still have signs flashing where we did the road construction that say construction is starting April fifteenth of two thousand and nineteen on both ends. And I would love to see those gone.
What's that? Are those the big state signs?
They're not our signs.
Yeah. I mean, I can hook them up and drag them out of there.
I would advise against that.
I'll take them to the city garage.
Maybe it's okay.
But I would really, I would love to see those gone.
On that note, I did get a call today from the mayor from Perryville that drove through Fulton and just wanted to congratulate us on that project. Thought it was really, really impressive. So, just FYI.
Nice to hear.
Pretty cool.
The city manager from Perryville's a pretty good guy, too.
Is he?
Yeah.
Sorry, moving on.
We do have a lot of extra people coming through town right now with ninety-four being shut down.
And that may have been the case.
Heading out to the plant, there's a lot. Everything's coming through Fulton. If they come on up ninety-four from Jet City, they're coming through Fulton.
Councilwoman Paesnuck?
I have nothing.
Councilman Moore?
I really have nothing, but I was driving around the city, and I found it nice to see that we finally lightened up the warehouse street back there, put the streetlights. That looks nice.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Getting things done. All right. Moving on, resolutions. Councilman Shiverdecker's not able to be here tonight. Braun has graciously agreed to read this, if you wouldn't mind, sir.
Resolution number thirty-three forty-three. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton to sign all necessary documents in relation to tree resource improvement and maintenance grant and continuance upon receiving said grant monies approving the city in kind and monetary match. I make a motion to adopt resolution thirty-three forty-three at this council meeting.
I second, but I have questions.
I have comments as well.
I have questions.
Who wants to go first?
I'm leaning towards actually moving to table this unless we think we have enough information to move forward.
Well, one table will kill. Two paragraph.
At least table it.
I think.
I don't think we need to kill it, but I think we need to table it till we get some more.
Can we at least discuss it before we do that?
Of course, of course.
So, what's this grant?
Well, that's what got my excitement. It was, it's called a TRIM grant. And it's, in our situation, they came knocking on our door because the Forest Department of the State of Missouri traveled through the community and identified several ash trees in Veterans Park. And there's something called an Emerald Ash Bore that is attacking the ash trees. And without some treatment, the ash trees are going to die. Well, I heard there's a grant to get this done. So, I got, like I said, I got kind of excited. Let's have them come look and talk to us.
Sure.
Well, then when they came and talked to us, then it was, well, it's gonna be twenty-five thousand dollars. And it's gonna be seventeen thousand dollars, city of Fulton out of pocket to do a tree inventory. But it was gonna be a very, it's gonna be a city, I don't care why I say that, a very specific location, tree-owned inventory. It's gonna be the park, so it's gonna be some of the main streets. It's not gonna be all the side streets. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be anything on private property. It wouldn't be much of the trail. It would be a little bit on the trail. And I'm like, my enthusiasm's going down, thinking, we're not gonna take care of this ash bore. We're just gonna take care of it in the park. And then we got to the point where if you want to keep your ash trees, it's gonna basically cost you, using my map, a hundred and fifty dollars a year to give it a vaccination, to give it a shot. And I'm thinking, well, okay, well, if we have a hundred, well, that's gonna add up, or a thousand, that's gonna add up. And you have to, you only gotta give the shot once every three years, but it works out to be a hundred and fifty dollars a year. And then, the data that these people would come and get for the tree inventory would give it to us on this, it's called Treekeeper software. Well, the first year, because you did the big project with them and everything, they give it to you. But then, if you want to continue having your trees inventoried on a special fancy software program, it's gonna be two thousand dollars a year, basically. And I just, I mean, every time we got, she kept talking, it was just like, it's more money, and it's more money. And so, after the hour, hour and a half presentation, I was feeling much less enthusiastic, but I felt we had enough time and energy and effort in it already that I thought I should bring it to you. And instead of me just saying, no, that's not something I think the city should do, I thought I should ask the council if that's something the council thought we should do.
So, what you're saying is it would cost the city seventeen thousand dollars plus whatever money we get in this TRIM grant to go and count trees?
What's dollar for dollar match?
Ash trees.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I haven't yet heard how much.
What is the grant?
What the grant is.
About fifty percent.
So, is it gonna cost us thirty-four, cost thirty-four thousand dollars to?
It's about thirty thousand. It's about thirty thousand.
To go count trees?
No, to go identify trees and take an inventory, not just count.
Just ash.
Okay.
It would be, it would be an eight-inch ash tree in healthy condition at this GPS location. Okay? And it's healthy. And then we would have to do an inventory again. See, this is one of those projects that you just can't do and be done.
Yeah.
It's something you, once you stick your toe in, you're kind of committed to stick that toe in there every year to keep not only the inventory marginally current, which we don't currently have, we don't have staff to do that, and then the ongoing expense with the Treekeeper and the ongoing expense with the, giving the trees the medicine that they need to ward off the bug.
Do we have any indications that we have the Emerald Ash Bore?
Yes, yes, we have. We have, in fact, I haven't seen it. They caught some in Veterans Park. They have an ash bore trap. They did catch some in Veterans Park. And I've been told that the tree on the northeast corner of the courthouse is in ash. I'm taking somebody's word of that. And that it is infected. I'm seeing that that's on county property. That wouldn't even be part of, that wouldn't even be part of our inventory.
I'm just, go ahead, go ahead.
My discussion on it is for if you're gonna spend thirty thousand, we might as well let the ash tree die and plant a tree that we know is more acceptable living in our environment for that kind of money. That was my input on it. I just thought that was a little bit too much of a program force.
I would have to agree. I'm not, I'm not sure it's money well spent. I mean, I'm all for trying to keep trees, but.
Save a tree.
I'm not sure it's money well spent.
Especially since it's not, this database that this company comes up with isn't ours. We have to pay them every year so we could look at it.
And this wasn't something that the city went after. These people approached us.
Yes, of course.
Now, under Bono, a few years back, we went as a tree city. But I still think that we could still plant, for that kind of money, we could plant a lot of trees in Fulton.
I would think so, too.
Well, maybe we could learn how to give the trees the shots ourselves. I don't know. I mean, for four hundred and fifty bucks, I could learn how to do that.
Yeah, I'll go out with you.
I can count trees for less than thirty thousand.
I think this might be something we can come back to at a later time.
I think we have an opportunity. It could also be an Eagle Scout project.
Do, do we even?
The Boy Scouts have to do a whole lot of stuff, the girls.
As Willie Jones used to say.
Listening to the conversations, do we even need to come back at a later time? Should we just vote this down?
I would point out, and Bill might know, I've been gone a little bit, but he might know a little bit more about this, but I think the deadline for this grant is like next week anyway. So, there's really no reason to table it if you're not in favor of it.
June sixth or something.
Yeah. So, there's not really an opportunity to come back to it before this grant period would close anyway.
Okay.
You know, maybe there would be a better program that comes along down the road.
Or like you said, a scout.
Yep.
Always a project.
So, call for the question. All those in favor of this, say yes. All those opposed?
No.
Thank you. Thanks for nothing, Bill.
Don't worry.
Thank you for bringing it, too.
Thanks for bringing it. Exactly. I appreciate that, too.
We're looking. Sometimes the looking doesn't turn out quite as good as we hoped.
That's okay.
Thank you. I think we all learned a little bit at the very least. Moving on, Councilman Simmons, would you present resolution thirty-three forty-four?
Yes, sir. Resolution number thirty-three forty-four. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to the settlement of litigation and adoption of the collective bargaining agreement with the IAFF Local twenty-nine forty-five and establishing effective date. Given that we rejected the contract several months ago, but since then, the city and the union have gotten together and revised some of our concerns, I recommend we approve the contract at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Great. We have this on the table for discussion. Is there any discussion on this? We can all feel.
The bonded language of our city manager says we might need to make an amendment to this resolution before it goes forward.
Michelle?
No.
Michelle, do you have the new settlement agreement?
The final one?
Yeah, the one that their attorney changed the last wording on.
Don't we have it?
No, this isn't it. This is not it.
Why would we?
It's not the one that you sent out earlier?
Because this has been a work in progress. It is even as late as, I mean.
Today.
Today, this morning.
Yep.
I'm looking for it.
Did this get emailed out to us today?
No, I don't think this part did. What it says is.
I saw the email, Bill, that you sent that was back and forth, that everybody agreed on the terminology.
We did. But on the settlement agreement, the union attorney wanted a little bit different process. They, what, maybe we can just, no, we don't need to, no. Maybe we could give Michelle, we could go on to the next resolution and come back to this way. You go and find that new settlement agreement?
The settlement agreement or the contract?
Settlement agreement.
Okay, yes.
You know where that said, their attorney added that chunk about the approval process, the steps. You know what I'm talking about?
I believe so.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm sorry, I do have that.
That was quick.
I thought you said the contract.
The contract is as, as it all was done. Am I correct?
There you go.
The contract should be fine.
Okay.
I think so, too.
What I would like to, I want to read you a paragraph, and it's, it's all good. I mean, I just want you to know that there's, that the union attorney wanted a modification to the settlement agreement. What we're talking, what we're talking about tonight is two different documents, but it's one resolution. The settlement agreement that was in your packet is ninety-five percent correct. What it says is, both sides have come to a mutual understanding.
I guess I didn't see that in my packet. I didn't see any settlement agreement in my packet. It was.
You should have had it with thirty-three forty-four. It should be attached to the back.
Did you?
I got it electronically. I know that.
There's disagreement right now.
Yeah, no, I saw the contract. I'm sorry, Courtney, I don't see one.
Go, go ahead. I don't know what to tell you on that.
Anyway, the resolution authorizes the execution of two, Michelle, we gonna make copies. Can we, should we move the next resolution to combat?
We do not have a settlement agreement in the.
In our.
Packet that was sent out last Friday. We only have the contract.
Okay.
Or I'm only seeing it.
It's, it's, guys, it's all, it's, it's all good.
Do we want to skip on and then come back to this?
Yeah, we need it tabled.
No, not table it. Just, just put it on hold.
Let's just come back to it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Just put it on hold, keep moving through, and when Michelle comes back, we can get back to it.
Okay, so, moving on. The next ordinance we have is actually tabled. We would need to untable this. If I do have a motion, we will. Or we could leave it on the table. It's bill number fifteen forty.
I move we bring bill fifteen forty off the table for discussion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor of bringing this off the table, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
One. Okay. So, that motion did pass with six to one. Is that right? Okay. So, Kyle, if you would, introduce our guest here, please.
Do I not have to read it first?
No, he'll do this, and then you'll follow.
Thank you, guys. Joe Pesci here with JAviation. I have Joe Pesca here with J Aviation. He's gonna go through a few slides, give you some information on the airport and why it may be a good time to go after a grant to do hangars. Also, I'm manipulating this here.
I've also provided you guys some handouts. First handout looks like this. It's got information from other towns that have airports around us, gives you some information on their hangar rents. Basically, to sum it all up, everybody's pretty cheap. The rent, rent around us is about what we are. Our rent right now for T-hangers, twelve hundred square foot, you're looking at a hundred and fifty-six dollars a month. Only the, the Lake of the Ozarks, they were at about three hundred dollars a month. The second page to that is a list of folks that are on our waiting list, and we asked those folks, you know, would they be willing, you know, would they be willing to at least put down a month's rent to be on the waiting list? Right now, it's just a free-for-all, it's, it's just, you ask to be on the waiting list, we'll put you on the waiting list. But all but two that we weren't able to get ahold of in a timely manner said yes, they would put at least a month's rent down. Some said that they would put more. So that's what that is all about. Now, can we get Joe started here?
Good evening, I appreciate the time. I'll run through these slides pretty quickly, open it up for more Q and A, so hopefully that'll help. Any questions airport-wise that you have, just let me know. Touch on three things very quickly, a little bit of background activity at the airport, a little bit of MoDOT grant funding process, you've got some background there, and then talk a little bit about the T-hanger project. Just to give you a little bit of a background, some of this information, it may look a little bit big for the airport. This is the economic development, economic impact, economic benefit for the airport. It is significant from MoDOT's standpoint. This is one of the items that they'll look at in terms of when they are issuing grants or looking at project selection. So, something that MoDOT has, information-wise, that they do have for the airport, if you, if you kinda look down that, there's twenty jobs listed there, doesn't necessarily mean there's twenty jobs at the airport, but that is something that the airport creates in terms of the, the revenue that comes in and out of the airport. From a payroll standpoint, that's about a half million. And then, when that money gets circulated through the economy, it generates about one point six million on an annual basis. So it's a pretty significant number from the airport standpoint. It, it is an accepted process and an accepted formula that the FAA has approved and that MoDOT uses in other states, too. So, that is a little bit of the information that helps in terms of when they're looking at the number of base aircraft, the number of takeoffs and landings, the economic benefit that the airport provides when they're issuing grants. This is information from that study, it is dated, it's from 2012, but it does give you a list of the potential businesses or the businesses that have used the airport in This just gives you an idea about, this is a typical aircraft. A lot of what we'll do from a design and a construction standpoint is around critical aircraft, so that aircraft is actually a little bit bigger than what these are shown. But a lot of the use that's out at the airport are these types of aircraft, they're in the four to six to eight passenger range. So it kinda gives you some idea in terms of the type of aircraft that they're looking This is an interesting, it's a snapshot. This is data from the FAA, and basically it's about maybe three to six or seven percent of your actual activity, but this gives you an idea of the reach of the airport. So, these are takeoffs and landings, it's just very small, it's a small percentage for your year, but in terms of the connection, it looks like you get connected to maybe twenty-six, twenty-eight states, so it can get you out to the east coast and get you out to pretty much western Colorado from leaving the airport. If you do look a lot, there is activity up to the Mayo Clinic, other places like that, so it is used for, you know, business, medical purposes, those kinds of things. It's a little bit tough to read on this slide, but this is MoDOT's grant funding program. They have four programs. The airport's currently participating in what I would call that yellow slice of the pie. The airport participates in, it's called a non-primary entitlement program. They get a hundred and fifty thousand annually, and you can lock it up for a three-year period and then use it on a construction project. You can use that on an annual basis. A hundred and fifty thousand is a lot, but when you're looking at a capital improvement project, and specifically a capital improvement project in the airport, it doesn't go a long way. So normally, when a lot of other communities within the state and across the country, they'll let that add up for a three-year period, and that gives them approximately a half million, gives them about four hundred and fifty thousand in grant funds, and they can apply that toward a project. The other slices of that pie is something if we do scope out a project, and it's more than the non-primary entitlement that you have in your account, we can pursue one of those other pots of money to, to help close that gap. All the grant funds that MoDOT have those four pies, it's a ninety percent grant and a ten percent local match. So the local match on all of those programs are ten percent. In terms of the, the T-hanger project, the one that we would be interested in pursuing to, to help, depending on the scope of that project, is the, the red pot, that red slice of pie, and that's called a State Aviation Trust Fund, and that money is generated from jet fuel, it's sold within the state. There's a tax on that, goes into account, and then MoDOT uses that for, for grants on, This is the, the project that we've been, we've been talking about. It's the continuation of the, the T-hanger development. It is beneficial from the standpoint of, it is a revenue generating project. Most of the projects at the airport outside of a T-hanger project or a fuel facility project are not revenue generating. So if we are looking at some form of pavement maintenance, or if we're looking at replacing the airship lighting, doing something along those lines, obstruction removal, weather system, or weather station, something like that, those per se will not generate new revenue. The two items that do that are, is a T-hanger project and, and a fuel, some type of fuel facility project. So it is very beneficial from that standpoint. It is also beneficial from the standpoint of, you don't see a lot of these across the state that are done. MoDOT really wants you to focus on, if you've got cracks in your pavement and taking care of the infrastructure, do that first, or have all those items taken care of, and then when you do, that's the time to approach MoDOT and say, hey, we've got an interest in doing a revenue generating project. Are you interested in, you know, talking about that project? So, MoDOT is receptive to doing this, so it is something from a timing standpoint that if you do have an interest in it, it would be good to, to look into. I'll flip back and forth on these, these are some preliminary costs that I've included in there, and the initial project is basically the light blue and the dark blue areas, and that would be kind of considered the, the phase one, the purple areas going to the north would be phase two. I think within this first phase project, we're looking at six hangar stalls and attempting to complete most of the pavement and taxi lane area to where you'd come back at a future time and finish out the hangar stalls.
Just a quick question. The, the blue pavement, if we did not do that portion of it, could we enter the, the side of the hangars that's between the, the last set that's there now? I mean, I know the project's, project's gonna come in higher than what we have matched, matching grant money for. Is that a stupid question?
No, I mean...
Because that's how we enter the others between the...
Yes, yeah, from the standpoint of, there is flexibility in the, in the scope development. You know, we're, from an economies of scale, we're, you know, we've been talking about doing the complete taxi lane for the whole twelve units. We could peel back and not do the, the light blue around the purple area. You know, there is, as much as we can, I would say, invest in the hangar portion of it, I would like to do that. That gives you the potential to get more revenue back. So, we can look at constructing four hangars instead of six, potentially, or something like that to where, you know, we could, we could take a step back from, from the number, number of hangars and have, have some savings there. The more stalls that we can put in, the, the more the revenue that's, that's ultimately coming back, so it's helpful in that regard.
So the opportunity that you're saying with concrete work, even though we won't do phase, we're not planning to do phase two as a hangar work, would provide more exposed parking?
Yes.
So, so more planes than what we have now could park there, they just wouldn't be in a hangar?
Could use that, yes.
And that's the revenue that we'd be generating?
So, what you have in the existing three sets of hangars is six hangars on either side? So if you build that one, what is it, like, three and two, or three and, I guess it's three, never mind, yeah, three and three?
The dark blue would be three and three. The, kind of a personal note on my end, and Kyle can voice his opinion, I'm, I'm not a huge fan of the islands, the, or the grass islands that are out there. That's, that's basically what you have. I think if we push forward, I, we'd be interested in trying to pave that whole, whole area next, next to the buildings, and I know from a kind of an operations and maintenance standpoint, it's much more difficult to take care of, so there is some interest in, in doing that. The, it's, it's a little bit odd, the, the hundred and fifty thousand that you get, if I go back and, let's see, the hundred and fifty thousand that you get, we can only use the grant funds from those green, that green piece of the pie on the building. So the building and about twenty-five feet of pavement next to the building is eligible with that hundred and fifty thousand. When we get out, that we need to hold and make sure we invest that into the building part of it. What we'd like to do is pursue the State Aviation Trust Funds, the red pot, to help us with the taxi lane. That's the, the pavement where the planes are gonna pull in, and before they turn into the building, that area there would be, would actually be a different fund, so to speak. I mean, actual funding in, in the grand scheme of things, you're not gonna see a difference in, basically in the grant funds, but the, the project would need to be separated out like that to where we, we invest as much as we can of the, the green funds, the hundred and fifty thousand, into the building portion of the project.
So, on, one of your slides, you showed an impact of twenty jobs, is that correct?
Yes.
Can you give an example of...
Yeah, how that is, is put out, that's, that's the airport just as a whole, and basically what, MoDOT will perform that study, they do it every six or eight years, and what they'll do, it's, it's formula-driven, but they look at, there's an amount that a visitor, when he flies into town, will spend. So he'll go and he may spend two nights in a hotel and eat so many meals, well, that, that generates jobs for the hotel or the restaurant, and then those are part of that, how they calculate those twenty jobs.
They have to have hotels.
If they come into town and they rent a car, if they buy fuel, I mean, part of that is also the, the airport staff that's out there, but a lot of those jobs are the money that's recirculated within the community if someone uses the airport and then comes into town and then purchases something.
What's the likelihood that we're gonna get the S A T F portion of that, that grant, the two fifty, to do the taxiway?
The two fifty, if, if we're interested in moving forward, we need to get with MoDOT immediately, because we're gonna need about two hundred and fifty grand if we do the, the six units and the full, the full taxi line.
I mean, are we gonna get it if we ask for it, or we might get it?
Uh, I'd say we might get it. I couldn't commit to saying that.
So this is all still maybe?
Yes.
Or it's gonna be on...
Either, either that, or we have about seven hundred grand of the non-primary entitlement that you have available in your account. So, if we do not have the state funds available, then we would have to scope something out that would fit your available funds, that you already have.
And we have how much?
The, what you have available is that six hundred and ninety...
Six ninety?
Six ninety.
I thought that was only through the, I thought that money came from the other piece of the pie, the non-primary entitlement.
Yes.
But you said I have to, we have to spend that on buildings?
Well, if we wind up spending the six hundred and ninety, we can do the project with the pavement and the buildings with the six hundred and ninety. Now, the, the green, the hundred and fifty thousand that, that you get annually, that's the only fund that we can build a building with. We cannot tap any of these others and try to help us with building costs. So we have to keep the building cost within this hundred and fifty thousand.
So, so we can, we can, the hundred and fifty thousand that we get, that we've been banking, we can spend some of that money on the taxiway?
Yes.
We just can't ask for the money from the other three...
Pots for the building.
For the building.
Correct.
Thank you. I, I was...
Sorry about that, but yes.
I was thinking of, just very specifically, like you said, that the one fifty had to go to a building.
Right.
It couldn't go to the taxiway.
Yes.
But it can, we just can't use the other money the other way.
The, the green, the one fifty, we can use it for it.
Okay.
A hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, three years is the max, you can save it, that's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
How do we come up with six hundred and ninety?
The, we have 2016 funds that we need to get under grant, and that's kind of the, the schedule that we're looking at.
About ninety thousand.
About ninety thousand of that, that we need to get under grant. What we're, we would like to do is bid the project out in the fall, and in, if we have the bids, then in terms of the actual physical construction happening next year, we've got some flexibility with MoDOT in that regard. And then the hundred and fifty thousand of the 2020 funds, we'd need to allocate toward the project, but we wouldn't do that.
So it would be four years total?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the big, kind of the time constraint is doing something with the ninety thousand that we have available from 2016.
So if we go for this grant, this ninety percent grant, and we do not get it, we do not build the hangars?
Uh, no, I mean, I, I think that's a discussion that we would need to have. I mean, we could scale the scope back to fit the avail, available funding. We would just be doing smaller projects.
Well, we don't really have any funds available. We take a loss on the airport every year. That's the reality of it.
Yeah.
So there's not funds available.
So, one thing to think about, the, the hangar will be paid for in about ten years, nine to ten years. That's our part of it, our ten percent grant through revenue generated by rent fees would, would pay for this, our part of it, in about ten years, and then it's an asset the city has.
I know Joe's, Joe's last slide here, uh, last two slides indicate that, at the rates that, at the rate that we're at right now, we're looking at around nine years to, to pay that portion, to pay our ten percent back. Now, he's got, I think the next slide shows, you know, the life of these hangars obviously shouldn't be longer than ten years, and we have, we have hangars out there right now that are definitely, life is longer... that are, um, definitely, life is longer than ten years, so, so, you extend that out to fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, as he has shown on there, you're, you know, you're thirty, at the current, about the current rate that we're at right now, you're at, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's generated.
And then the money that we have, that we've received, if we don't spend that plus our match, that's money that goes back, correct?
Right, if we don't, if we don't spend, uh, the two thousand and sixteen money, I should say, not, I shouldn't say spend, if we don't have to obligate-
Right. Obligate.
Right.
We've got ninety thousand dollars left to obligate this year.
By September.
That will cost us nine thousand, so we need- So, if we don't spend nine thousand out of our pocket, we can't spend their ninety, and we have to give it back. Next year, if we don't start, if we don't spend fifteen out of our pocket to spend their hundred and fifty, we've gotta give that back, so it's-
It's, oh, yeah.
It, it's money, it's, if, if we don't spend our ten percent, we can't spend their ninety.
Right, right, and, and again, the, the reason why we're looking at hangars is because our pavement is in good shape, and generally, uh, MoDOT, um, has said that our airport's in good shape, if you're gonna, if you're gonna do a-
And that's where the revenue comes from.
If you're gonna do a hanger project right now, now, really now's the time to do it, because as the pavement ages, you're gonna have to have pavement preservation project.
That's true.
As the lighting ages, you're gonna have to redo floor lighting, uh-
Which, we can get out of those other pieces of pot.
Right.
Potentially.
That's, that's the reason why we're looking at, at hangars, it actually generates revenue, you know, if we're, if we're taking a loss at the airport, which is a fact that Joe's men, that John has mentioned, is that, you know, there's, there's really only a few means to generate money at the airport.
Kyle, um, airport hangars are very expensive, and we, I had you do a little investigation as to, you design them, okay? Can you tell the council a little bit about what you just found out on that?
Yeah, talked with MoDOT, and I said, hey, we've got engineering staff here, it's pavement, and it's a building, um, and they basically told me that no one in state's done it, they've talked to some other states, said, and I said, well, I, I don't care, you know, I mean, we, we could be the potential at first, and I said, well, there's, there's so much, uh, red tape, basically, you know, when it comes to all the different-
FAA?
All the, all the FAA requirements, uh, when it comes to envi, environmental, to, just all of the requirements, said it's a really hairy project, and, and you're really putting yourself at risk, uh, to do it, if, if you're gonna go down that road, so we would not suggest it, we're not gonna tell you that you can't, but, um, it, it's, it's risky, and they sent me a laundry list of, of, uh, the items that, that Joe would be doing.
Twenty items?
Yeah.
I bet it was, it was, it was a very long list of-
It was a long, it was a long list.
Certifications and requirements for acquisitions.
So, the one million dollars-
Now, I do, like, as, as Joe's telling me, and we've talked about this, is that, uh, on the construction side of it, there are some things that, that we could potentially shave some cost at, I mean, we don't need J aviation up there to, you know, on a daily basis, where we're building this stuff, you know, I mean, it's, that stuff's not necessary, you know, there are, there are some things, maybe some site work, that, that we can potentially, uh, shave some cost at, so, you know, we've looked at a couple of those items.
So, the one million dollars is all-inclusive, engineering, design engineering, construction, the whole, everything?
Through phase one.
Through phase, through phase one.
Yeah, through phase one, right. I know, um, the airport advisory board, the meeting we had, uh, a couple of weeks ago, had tasked you with trying to look into other means of bringing the air, people at the airport into Fulton. Um, one thought was a courtesy car, uh, have you gotten any other suggestions or information?
We, uh, while we were, while we were polling the other communities, uh, for the informa, for the hanger information, we also asked them a number of other questions, and one of the, one of those questions was, do they have a courtesy car, and, um, if they do, is it city-owned, is it, you know, city insured, all, all that, all those kind of, how do they handle it? So, uh, I've got some information for the next, uh, for, for that next meeting.
Another question I told Kyle before we talked about this tonight was, how are the lights?
Real lights, the real lights are the runway end indicating lights, so they're at the, the end of the runway, and, uh, on eighteen thirty-six, which is the old runway now, um, it's, uh, those real lights, uh, have an issue, and, uh, so those, those lights are looking at, probably, we looked at pricing, and you're, you know, you might have a better idea, but you're, you know, somewhere twenty, thirty thousand dollars, something in there on those lights, and, uh, but other than that, the, the lights at the airport are-
Would the lights be an eligible expenditure?
The lights would be an eligible expenditure. Yeah, those lights would be.
So, if we do the, if we did that little project, and how far then would that get us with the remainder towards the, uh, first step of the engineering part of this?
Yeah, you could look at, uh, that, couple of that project with, uh, obligating funds for a potential design of, of, uh, hangars, and, uh, you know, to, to get you moving forward on those hangars, um, you know, you could, you potentially use up those funds, that ninety thousand dollars for this year with that lighting project and, and the design phase of the project.
Yeah, I, I think if we had funds left over, I think if we had the bids, that's what MoDOT's looking at, the bids for the project, and in the sixteen, you say we can make that commitment, we're gonna be spending it in the spring. You're not alone in terms of other folks that have sixteen funds, so there is kind of a scramble at the end of expiration, you know, the folks that come in.
Could the city council make the construction of the hangars contingent upon receiving the additional grants?
Yes. Because really, if we, if we proceed ahead with, I'd say, the full phase one, when we go meet all grants.
And our application for that project includes, uh, those funds, that additional two hundred and fifty funds, so what's sent to MoDOT is an application not only for, uh, the non, non, uh, non-primary entitlement funds, but also, uh, the two hundred and fifty for that other pot, so.
What's the, what's the length of the project? How long's it gonna take to do the taxi lane and, and phase one?
Yeah, it would be, um, construction in, in two thousand and twenty, so it would be construction next year, um, but I think the, the duration, it, it's not that long. I mean, we're doing a number of projects, um, at, at other G A airports in the state, and it would be over the summer.
Could be within calendar year twenty twenty?
Yes, yeah.
Taxi lane in phase one would be done.
Yes. The thing that I probably suggest would be doing it in late summer, early fall, and then we will make sure that we've got that hundred and fifty thousand from two thousand and twenty that's available for us.
What about for twenty twenty?
You'd start losing funds from seventeen.
But they'd be obligated.
No, because it's gotta be completed, correct?
Yeah, we would, um-
I just don't think it's money well-spent for this city, and it's my personal opinion.
Potentially, I could have that discussion with, with MoDOT, um, from a construction standpoint, we'd be taking bids in the fall of nineteen, but not constructing until twenty twenty one.
Well, we wouldn't finish until, until, the basin calls, would be construction during twenty twenty.
Yeah.
I'm thinking, when we would have, where I'm going with that-
Just in terms of spreading out the cost.
Spreading out the cost, because we've gotta come up with a hundred thousand dollars, and right now, based on your original thought, was that would all be within calendar year twenty twenty. Because if the, if the project ends during calendar year twenty twenty, we've gotta come up with our matching. But if we, if we shifted it a little bit, then we could have some expenditures on the city side for the matching in twenty twenty, and some expenditures in budget year twenty twenty one.
And your budget year is from when to when?
Calendar year.
Calendar, yeah.
I know, I know, we watched the discussion.
But then that, that kind of pushes us on the sixteen dollars and the seventeen dollars.
I think that they would, they, they probably would definitely let you, if, if a loan was taken out, pay back, pay back everything but the interest of that loan with that, with that twenty twenty one money, and, and you, you, you can check to see if it's, yeah.
We could figure that out on our end also. If it did need to be completed in twenty twenty, we could figure out funding if we needed some sort of funding product to take us into twenty twenty one. That would be part of our budget discussion.
Are we authorizing engineering to go after the grant for the new hangars? And then have him, have them come back to us for approval to spend the money? Or are we going to say, go ahead and get the grant and spend the money? Or say, don't bother?
The way I, the way I interpret it is, if the, if the grant is there, we're gonna spend the money. If we receive the grant, we're gonna spend the money. That's the way I interpret it, and we're giving, we're giving the mayor the authority to sign.
And if it, if it ends up going over the ten percent, our cost going over the ten percent, that's part of this contract, so we would have to come back-
That's correct.
Talk about that, or-
If the, if the grant doesn't come through.
Right, if that, if that additional funds didn't come through.
Yeah, or we may cut the project, or do things to keep that ten percent exposure at ten percent, gotcha. So, I have a motion on the floor, guys, is there any other?
Can, the lights will be part of that, this project? I mean, the, the lights is, the lights is a safety issue, and that's one of my main concerns out there, and I wanna, I wanna feel good that the lights work.
I think the, the, the real lights could either be just a small purchase, procurement via MoDOT, which taps into the same, the same funds, I think they would be two, it would be separate, but, uh, it wouldn't be intertwined with this project, but what we would do is have a separate, small, small projects application through MoDOT, so it, it would be a special, that real light project is a small project, they have a small projects application that you could tap into, the, the same funds.
Same money.
Right, the same.
So, we could, we could do that next week?
Yeah, I mean, we, I would say, recommend returning an application for the, the real lights along with an application for the G A project, if you'd like to do that, and then you could use the non-primary time, your hundred and fifty thousand, um, for the real lights, you just need to give whatever that cost is that extra twenty thousand, we need to get through in state funds to, if we're looking to backfill this project quickly.
And we could, I mean, the, the, the project, if it went, uh, as far as going to, uh, being let out for construction, we could, we could have all, you know, a couple of alternates in there to take care of some, you know, so you could have an alternate of how much taxi lane gets put in based upon how much money we have, so if the bids come in at a certain amount, you can say, oh, let's cut that piece of, that piece of the, the pavement out, type of thing.
Any more questions?
Yes.
Comments?
Now that you're all done, explain back to us exactly what you plan to do in the very beginning of this.
There you go, okay.
I wanna know what we're voting on, because I'm confused on the-
You haven't read it yet.
I know, but what are they planning on putting in this first phase, that's what I'm, the total, lights?
Everything.
Everything. The six hangars and the lights.
Talking about, talking about as many hangars as we can, uh, build out there for what we can afford with, between the, uh, N P E funds and the additional state funds, hopefully, we can get those additional state funds, uh, to, to lengthen or further that project, so.
So, that includes the lights that he was talking about, the safety, okay?
Yeah, it would be-
I just wanted to make sure we's all on the same page.
I think you would have to add that, add that.
So, is everybody comfortable where they wanna go on this, any more discussion?
And it will, if, if you guys approve this night, and we even get the grant, it's still gonna come back to you guys at some point in time to prove it.
Well, we're only a first reading.
Then we're only at first reading. So, we have two more readings for more discussion.
But we don't, yeah.
So, okay. So, will you know more about the extra money by in two weeks?
Yeah, if, if, uh, if you're up here with the side, I mean, I'll go, get to low down tomorrow and start, start those discussions, just gotta see.
Get some of these questions answered for, and then bring Kyle up to speed, and in a couple of weeks, we'll ask him again where we stand on everything?
So, we, we would know before we made any vote one way or the other whether we were gonna get grant money?
Definitively, I'm not sure, I'm gonna have to leave that, that would have to be MoDOT, saying that for the two fifty.
How can we, how can we realistically vote on something that's-
There's just many variables.
Too many variables.
I, I think it needs to go back to the table, till we know whether there's grant money, because I can't see spending the dollars on something that we continually, taxpayer dollars, to continually lose money at the airport. I understand it's supposedly a revenue generator, but it's also more maintenance on hangars, there's more, there's more things to happen, it's twenty-five percent more, we have three hangars now, now we just upped it by another hanger, which is another twenty-five percent expenditure out there, in my opinion.
But without signing these documents, you're not really able to go for, you're, you're not able to go for the grant without us signing these authorizing documents with J aviation, correct?
Right.
So, we're not, we-
We can't go after it if there's not-
We can't wait for him to come back with approval of a grant, because he can't apply for it until we authorize the mayor to sign the documents.
If we nix it tonight, we can't, we really can't move forward, but if we wait, if we go ahead and approve it tonight, in two weeks or four weeks, whichever the case may be, we have time to stop it, is that fair to say?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, to simplify the variables, is that, uh, that we know through, uh, the N P E funds, how much we have, so do we wanna use those funds to fund a hanger project or not? And, you know, there is a contend, you know, a hope that we get these other additional funds to further, further the project, but, uh, with what we do have, with what we do know, do we wanna build some more hangars out there? You know, that may, that may be four hangars, um, that may be six hangars, but with only taxiway to, to support, uh, a few of those at the moment, until we, until we build up-
Get more money.
Yeah, right.
We're unsuccessful with the, the state grant for the two hundred and fifty thousand developed scope, that would be available, not part of the time of the job.
Okay. So, we have a motion on the floor?
No, we have no motion, Mr. Mayor.
We do have a motion and a second from the previous meeting to move it to second reading. That motion was never voted on, because we went to the table.
So, we're still open for that, okay? Is there any more questions?
Thank you.
I'll call for the question, all those in favor.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
What is the question? What are we voting on?
To move bill number fifteen forty for second reading at the next council meeting.
Okay, so we're approving this-
You're not approving it, you're moving it to second reading at the next meeting.
Well, okay, we're approving the first reading.
Yes.
For them to go after the grant, no.
It's an ordinance, you're gonna read it three times, so you're gonna move it to second reading, they're gonna continue doing their research that they need to do, but until you officially have an ordinance- But until you officially have an ordinance that's been passed, the mayor cannot sign those documents. So we're going to have to move it forward if we want more time in order for them to continue their process. But they're not actually going to apply until the mayor can sign those documents.
And at such a date and ti, date and time, you guys can say, Mayor, we don't want you signing anything, we don't want to get the grant.
Okay, that's where I'm at.
You know, do everything we can to get the grant with the contingency, he's not going to sign if we don't. Just because you gave him the authority to, doesn't mean he's going to pass the bill.
So we're going to have first reading tonight. So if for some reason we don't get the grant, if for some reason we don't get the grant.
But the first reading's already happened at the last meeting.
We just didn't approve.
It never got voted on, that's it.
Right.
Right, we're going to look, we're going to vote on the first reading tonight. And if that's approved, then we will have a second reading and a third reading, which if we need to stop it, we can stop it at those two points. Is that correct?
And, and even after that, as I said, you can tell the mayor, if you don't get the, if we don't get the grant, don't sign it, just kill it.
Okay.
Yeah, but we won't even know that we got, whether we get a grant or not. Am I, am I incorrect? Because until we go through the full reading and, and approve the ordinance, nothing moves forward. Am I, am I incorrect by that?
This is basically just giving, giving the ability for, for myself, authorized Joe, to get with MODOT to see if, if, if we will get this grant. It's not spent.
The only, the only true expense, the only true expense that we're going to incur if this goes to third reading and the mayor signs the documents is just the consultant fee with J A nation for them to apply for the grant.
Yeah, it's any, any level.
No, we, do, do we not have an agreement with them? Or we will when we get done with that reading?
Yeah, we, we really won't get into like any fees with us till we get into the design agreement.
Right.
Because the actual, the, the grant paperwork is really not an expense.
And that'll come.
It's, it's minimal.
So the motion on the floor is to move this ordinance, this bill, to second reading at the next meeting. That's what we're getting ready to vote on.
Everybody clear? All right. I'll call for the question, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed?
No.
No.
Two no's?
Councilwoman Reclu and Councilman Braun. Thank you.
That'll be moved on to second reading at our next meeting. Bill number fifteen.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Could we take a five or ten minute recess, please?
Uh, yeah, we can take five.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Okay, let's call this meeting back to order. We'll move backwards now to Resolution thirty-three forty-four. Yeah, twenty-three forty-four. And did we read this? And get a motion in second?
Yep.
And we had a motion and we were in discussion phase.
Okay, gotcha. So we have a new document here we looked at. Lot of legalese.
Okay. There's two documents here. One's a resolution. The first one is the settlement document. Okay? And the other one's the contract. There's two, there's two documents covered by one resolution. I just want to go over the settlement document that was handed out to you tonight. And I, I agree, we apologize that this wasn't given to you earlier. We just, it was omitted from your council packet. And I didn't realize that until, obviously, this evening. But the things covered in the settlement agreement that neither party admits, what, what the settlement agreement does is it, it says that the union's going to dismiss the lawsuit. And some of the items contained in here, which is neither party admits any improper activities, plain effort, which is the union agrees to dismiss the lawsuit, contingent, and after the city council ratifies the settlement A and collective bargaining agreement. It says that, basically says, Michelle, Kevin, and I will say this is a good thing and, and ask for you to support it. And as part of the settlement agreement, it's going to give each party, each party the opportunity to adopt. And then if you look at the number five at the bottom, that is the new verbiage submitted by the union's attorney. It basically says that the city council will adopt this resolution tonight. And then the union will adopt the settlement agreement. And within the fourteen days of that ratification, they, they're going to take it to their local union. And they're going to get it adopted and approved by the local within fourteen days. And then the Smiths' lawsuit within seven days of the settlement's adoption and ratification of the collective bargaining agreement. Okay? And then if you look at the next page or in the back, each party's going to pay for its own attorney's fees and other expenses associated with litigation. Very standard items here. Okay? Are there any questions on the settlement agreement? Michelle, if you'd like to come up. Just, just as kind of a moral support. I, I talked to the fire guys just three minutes ago, too, and said I'm going to probably ask them a question or two. We, the city made concessions and the union, it made some concessions in the, in the adoption of this agreement. One thing I want, I'm going to ask them, and he got, he got a little more technical on me than I, I'm glad he knows what he's talking about. One of the issues that you remember goes back a couple of months to the step-up pay. The document says that in the absence of a captain, when the captain has a day off, that one engineer is going to step up. And only one engineer is going to step up at a time. Correct?
Is that per house on the engineer's side?
That is not per house.
Okay, captain's is one.
One.
And then that's the way I read it.
Yep.
Yes.
There will be one.
One captain on shift.
Engineer per shift, per hour. We went, we went from a whole twenty-four hours. Now it's hour for hour. So if a captain takes off of three hours to go to the dentist, the, the engineer will step up to the captain's position for that three hours and be paid, step-up pay for those three hours. Currently, he has a step-up for an entire twenty-four hour shift to get anything. Okay? And then the other thing that we, we have agreed to is that if a firefighter is sitting, is driving, which is the engineer's traditional position, firefighter is the entry-level fire position we have. If, if a firefighter is sitting and is driving the truck, they will, they will receive step-up pay for that time as well. Kevin said that doesn't ring off. Most of our, most of our guys are already engineers? Generally, engineers enough to go around?
Usually they have a better number. I'd say five.
Huh?
I'd say we'll probably split at this point.
Are there any questions on the document?
That doesn't happen when there's an engineer on shift, correct? At the station.
And it, it would if the engineer was required to step up to the officer's seat.
So if we have a shift captain that goes and does something.
Goes away, yep.
The, one of the house engineers would step up to the shift captain position?
Yes.
And then one of the firefighters would step up to the engineer position?
Maybe.
If there was no second engineer.
If there's no second engineer.
If there's no.
Okay.
Anything you guys look?
I just want to thank everyone involved here for, for the work that's been done over the last two years. That's been going on. The city council members that are here, the ones that are not here. We owe them some gratitude for working through this. The union, Michelle, Bill, Chief Hofelt. Would you guys like to speak at all? I mean, you've had the floor if you, if you have anything to say as well.
Anything to say?
I have a question, too. Probably Scott. One of the items that was changed was Article Eight concerning that all candidates would possess firefighter one and two certifications and EMT basic certification. And that was changed to read first responder certification instead of EMT?
Yes.
I believe that came from the, the chief and the city side.
Okay.
Yes.
Is that going to have any impact on the current protocols that you guys have been following in partnership with the ambulance district?
No.
Thank you.
No. No, they all go through the first responder training or they come into EMT level.
That's what I wanted. We built a lot of protocols around that partnership in the last couple of years. And I wanted to make sure this wasn't taking us a step back.
No, same, same was we follow in county. So there's going to be no changes as far as protocols and things of that nature.
Thank you.
Yes.
Good. Thanks. Anything else?
That was my only question.
Any other questions?
I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? That passes, alright. Fantastic. Moving on. Ms., Councilwoman Seabacher, if you would, please present Bill Number fifteen forty-three for first reading.
Yes, sir. Bill Number fifteen forty-three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with the collector and county commissioners of Callaway County, Missouri, relating to the collection of taxes, with the contract period commencing upon approval through June two thousand twenty-three. I make a motion to place Bill Number fifteen forty-three for second reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Secretary.
This is formality, but it's something we do every year. Does it have the rate on here? I didn't even look.
Five thousand.
Five thousand.
Total monthly four hundred.
We could not, just, just to give a little bit of, little bit of background, we've been doing this for, for decades. And it would be based on the county's way of collecting and assessing taxes. It would be next to physically impossible for us to do this. And if we made an attempt, it would far exceed five thousand dollars a year. In time, effort, computers, data.
So what you saying you don't want to get in the tax business?
I want, I want you guys to go yes. I want you to go yes loud.
Captain, you don't want to be in the tax business?
Councilwoman Moore.
I have a question, not for the night, but by a second reading. When's the last time we raised city stickers and what is the cost of it?
Well, Mr. Moore.
Verified it on our taxes.
I think they're five dollars. Just, Mr. Moore, if, if city councils are talking about city stickers at the council meeting, the typical conversation is, let's get rid of it. We're probably in the vast minority of communities that can still have a city sticker.
Hey, that wouldn't follow me, but I just find, I just wondered. I figured, I've never heard of it in the last twelve years. Anybody seen anything about it?
I didn't know they even still existed.
They could from what you said.
But you don't get this.
You don't get no sticker.
Don't see Steve. That's the complaint we get, like, once, maybe twice a year. I get the city sticker bill on my tax bill. I want my sticker. We don't do it.
I wouldn't be opposed to doing waves of it because I don't know how many vehicles there are, but it's just. Or maybe I'm changing my mind.
Yeah.
That's your fund, Steve.
That's my little pot, maybe.
Maybe they should be ten.
You said that, Mr. Stone.
Yes, I did.
Alright, that's all.
When we look at the rest of the funds that we are, the fees that we charge, we look at that one, too.
There you go.
Okay, so getting back to the tax at hand, is there any more discussion on this? I'll call for the question. All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Got it, done. Okay, moving on to fifteen forty-four. Councilman Simmons, if you would read that for us for a first reading?
Yes, sir. Bill Number fifteen forty-four. An ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to approve plat six for the South Winds of State subdivision. I make a motion that we approve Bill Number fifteen forty-four in advance of the second reading at the next meeting.
Second.
Okay, did this go through planning and zoning, I guess?
No. Earlier, this, this is the final plat.
Okay.
For, for four additional lots out of South Winds on the Far West Road that comes off of Tennyson. This will be four new lots on the very north end of that. There's a, there's a large sheet as a handout on your, at your desk.
Mary, you live out there and you had a concern about wetlands or something like that. Is that?
In this area you're talking about, I see no problem. This problem here. This, the four that they're asking for, I believe will be fine. The direction it is and the street it's on. I've kind of kept an eye on him, you know. We became, you know, being a councilman and all. And Bill Childs, he's doing a very good job and he's been very cooperative with the city. And I think we're fine here on this one. It might be that concern with the next part that he, next phase perhaps. Right now, I, I feel that we're, we'd be fine.
And the driveways would go straight onto Tennyson, I guess?
No.
No, no, this is way back by the lake.
Oh, I see. This side, okay.
Tennyson's here at the left side of the page.
Yeah, left side.
Way over here.
Gotcha.
This, this empty, on the left side where it's an empty area, that is, would be the next plat. And that's behind our street. So this is Tennyson and there's, there's empty land there yet. Now that will probably be the next plat. So we'll have to look at that. And that's the lake and he's going to do a cul-de-sac.
Kyle, why would you not include lots three, four, six, and seven in this one?
What he communicated with me on that was that, or to us, I should say, on that, is that he wants to save, that he's filling, he's progressively filling that area. And so he'd like to save that area so he can put, put fill from other areas in that, in that spot. Because that road actually has to come up a little bit in that area.
Good.
We did ask him to put a, at least a temporary turnaround, gravel turnaround of some sort at the end. So we just didn't have a, a dead end, trash trucks and whatnot could turn around.
How about lift station? Are we going to be okay? Are we going to need another lift station out in this area? Do we have enough, enough to handle what's going in out here?
I haven't heard anything to say otherwise. I think we're okay.
I believe there's another lift station on to the north. You see where the round cul-de-sac is?
Up in here?
If you go, yeah, if you go to, if you go off, off the sheet.
Yeah.
To the, there's another lift station down there.
There is.
And this, this, this whole subdivision was kind of approved as a sketch plat many years ago.
Yes.
With, with, I'm guessing about this number of houses and whatnot. I would have assumed that, that, that they would have sized that lift station without going and looking at the lift station and all that to see. I haven't heard any complaints from our steward department.
Mary, just looking at, just thinking about the lay of land?
Yes.
This is going to flow down to the.
Yeah, it's back.
Right off of Tennyson anyway. It's not going to the one, it's not going to go north. Not here yet.
Okay, alright. Then this is a different story. Okay. Thank you.
Is there any more discussion on that? I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? That passes. And moving on, Councilwoman Reclu, if you would read us Bill Number fifteen forty-five?
Uh, yes. Bill Number fifteen forty-five, an ordinance authorizing the use of private golf carts on Tanglewood Golf Course for the residents of Tanglewood Business Park and Tanglewood Subdivision and establishing an effective date. I make a motion that Bill Number fifteen forty-five be read for its second reading at the next meeting.
Second.
Scheduled meeting.
So we got a motion in second. We kind of got a little proposal on this in our packet.
That's here.
The developer that's building some, that's going, plans on building some of the condos out at the Tanglewood Business Park has asked for a document that can be recorded to memorialize to the people that buy the condos that, pretty much from this date forward, as long as they pay the trail fee and they meet the rules and regulations of the golf course, that they're going to be able to use their private golf carts on, on Tanglewood.
Well, they have to buy a, like a season pass, too, right?
Sorry?
To that golf course? They have to buy a season pass?
Yeah. Well, just with Tanglewood. A or B, correct?
Correct.
No. They can, if, if I read it correctly, they can just buy just the trail pass and pay daily.
Right, they can do A or B.
Sure.
Yep.
Oh, I see the new B. I'm, I'm thinking.
Yes, yeah.
Is this going to sort of make anybody mad that's maybe currently? Because I mean, I think we've got ourselves in trouble in the past.
It's pretty much, it's pretty much mirrors the current Tanglewood agreement, right?
Yeah, the, the highlighted change that I made since you got the first copy was just, there, there was an opportunity where you could just pay the trail fee and then come in and pay your greens fees every day. We only have one person that does that. So we think B kind of satisfies that.
Yeah.
Anyway, so we kind of simplified that. But this was all probably three years ago. We sat down with the Tanglewood homeowners that had private carts, had lots of discussion. And this is pretty much what they're doing right now with the, with that little bit of a change in the, in the wording. So I, I don't see that anybody up there will be upset with this, this document.
I know the website really only talks about the Tanglewood subdivision when it talks about the three hundred dollars. So it'll need to be changed a little to.
Yeah, we'll, we'll just, we'll reference it as a, a private.
Yeah.
Private cart treat, or private cart fee.
So if somebody wants a trailer in their own cart for something.
No, for, for adjacent developments.
Okay, that's fine.
That's in the warning. Right now, we're limited to adjacent developments.
Yeah.
Which would be the, the new apartments or condos, Tango subdivision. And I guess, I guess there's other condominiums in that, that business park.
There are.
Ballard, I asked the same question of earlier, is why not open it up to everybody? From the perspective of if we can generate more revenue and somebody wants to trailer their golf cart and pay the three hundred dollars? But it becomes, I, I think it probably becomes a nightmare to keep track of everybody. Got golf carts running everywhere.
It, it is. It's a little bit of a, a control issue and, you know, even though one person may pay the trail fee and bring their own cart, they might bring a buddy with them that doesn't even pay anything.
Right.
So it's, it's, those are a lot of the situations we had in the past. The Tanglewood homeowner's been real good. They, you know, we've worked with them. There's been a lot of communication. And I, I think they understand what we expect and, and they've been pretty good about following the rules.
It's really not the free-for-all that it could be. I've seen that.
Some cautious.
Some can be.
Not deep bad.
That's true.
Really not bad. Excellent.
Maybe we have a great guy that's running it. Because again, I'll, I'll reiterate. You make sure you let him know that I really.
I will. I will, he's doing a good job. Doing a good job.
If you get a chance, because I'll talk to him, he's very interested in listening to me.
Yeah, and I haven't had a chance unfortunately, but.
Thanks, Clay.
So we have a motion on the floor. Is there any more discussion on this? I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed, no? Thank you. Moving on, Bill Number fourteen, Fifteen Forty-six. Councilwoman Moore, if you would present that, please.
Bill Number fifteen forty-six, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to approve plat two for Willow Creek subdivision. I move this for second reading at next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Is this, what is this property? What are we doing here?
On Commons Drive.
This is right out past it. This is behind the.
It's a new subdivision.
Right off.
This is behind.
Gotcha. Okay.
Out by the.
The new, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the tower, water tower.
Movie theater, bowling alley.
This is his next phase, yeah.
Right. It, it, it's an extension of Commons Drive as it comes back there.
That's his next plat.
Very good.
Yep.
So we have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion, any questions on this? I'll call for the question. All of those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Thank you. Bill Number fifteen thirty-nine. Councilman Stones, would you read this for second reading, sir?
Bill Number fifteen thirty-nine, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to the, is this from that? Fifteen thirty-nine?
Yeah.
Airport consultant selection of JVA? Okay. Well, I thought we just passed this for first reading.
No.
No, this is something different.
This is to hire them as consultants.
Okay.
To hire them, yeah.
Thank you. My apologies, I'll start over, Mr. Mayor. Bill Number fifteen thirty-nine, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to the airport consultant selection of JVA and affirming the selection process met the Missouri Department of Transportation requirements. I move that we pass this for third reading at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Second.
Yeah.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Are there any questions on this? It's a little bit lax, I think, so. Nothing's changed.
It's mandated. It's mandated.
Yeah, we have to, yes. So if there's no questions, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? That moves on for third reading. Councilwoman Pace Snook, if you'd read fifteen forty-one for us?
Actually, we.
Didn't you ask for tonight's meeting?
Tonight's meeting.
Oh, did I? Okay. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
I might have paid attention. If you would, Mr. Sale.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I present Bill Number fifteen thirty-nine for third reading. An ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to the airport consultant selection of JVA and affirming the selection process met the Missouri Department of Transportation requirement. I move this for final approval at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Any questions on that? Call for the question. All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? So that passes. Do we need a verbal confirmation from everyone now?
Yep, so we've heard that one read three times. And now you can make your final considerations and I will call your name in roll call. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Pace Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Ms. Seabacher?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
And Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Seven council members affirmative.
Alright, moving on now. Councilwoman Pace Snook, if you would, read fifteen forty-one.
Bill Number fifteen forty-one, an ordinance repealing section two seventy-one, counselor to sign Fulton City Code and enacting a new section in lieu thereof. I make a motion to place Bill Number fifteen forty-one for third reading at tonight's council meeting.
Secretary.
Okay. Again, this is sort of housekeeping? Gotcha. Are there any questions or discussion on this? If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? And if you would, please read it again.
Certainly. Bill Number fifteen forty-one, an ordinance repealing section two seventy-one, counselor to sign Fulton City Code and, and, and acting a new section in lieu thereof. Make a motion to place Bill Number fifteen forty-one for fi, yeah, final passage at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no?
Alright, so you've heard that bill read three times. And go ahead and make your final considerations when I call your name on roll call. Ms. Pace Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Ms. Seabacher?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Six, I'm sorry, seven council members affirmative. So that one passes.
Alright. Councilman Moore, fifteen forty-two, please.
Bill Number fifteen forty-two, an ordinance reclassifying under the zoning ordinance a point six-four acre tract of land located neatly south of twenty-five fifteen North Bluff Street in Fulton, Missouri and establish effective date. I move this for final passage at tonight's meeting.
I think you need to do third reading.
Third read.
I said, yes.
You said final passage.
Well, for third reading at the night's meeting.
So I have a motion and a second?
I don't think we actually. There we go. Thank you.
We have a cough.
Excuse me. That worked. Sorry.
Okay.
An approval cough?
I don't know.
So we've talked about this one before. Does everyone understand, know what this is? No issues? No controversy? Alright, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no?
No.
Okay, we have one no. That'll move on. If you would, read it again, Mr. Moore.
Bill Number fifteen forty-two, an ordinance reclassifying under the zoning ordinance a point six-four acre tract of land located neatly south of twenty-five fifteen North Bluff Street in Fulton, Missouri and establish effective date. And this is the final passage at tonight's meeting.
Second.
So we do have a no. So we do have a no. If we wanna talk about this again, I'm sorry, Mr. Braun, if you, if you have anything to say on this issue?
Well, I just, I'm, I'm trying to be respectful of the, the current business that's behind them that is a very private business. And I don't, I don't see it to be worthwhile.
My concern with that is if we don't rezone it, they can either sell it to someone else or build on it and have no setbacks.
There's always that chance.
So that's a tough subject, I don't know. Is there any more discussion on this, any feelings about it? If anyone wanna share? Final, final call. I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
No?
No.
Six and one.
And one absent, so you have heard that one read three times, and now is the time to make your final considerations. I will begin with a roll call. Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Ms. Seibacher?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
No.
Ms.? Ms. Pace Snook?
No.
Okay, you have five affirmative, two opposed, and one absent. It passes.
Okay, moving on. We have third reading now on Bill number fifteen thirty-eight. Councilwoman Seibacher, if you would, be so kind?
Yes, sir. Bill number fifteen thirty-eight, an ordinance repealing chapter fourteen, animals, Fulton City Code, enacting a new chapter in lieu thereof, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill number fifteen thirty-eight for final passage.
Is there any discussion on this? If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed, no?
Alright, we have heard that one three times as well, so we'll go ahead and do roll call. Ms. Seibacher?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Pace Snook?
Yes.
And Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Seven council members affirmative, it passes.
Okay, that leaves us with announcements.
Just wanted to, I made the trip with the chamber last week to the, the recon, it's the retail convention, and made, I, one, I learned a lot. I, I learned a great deal from the experience. Three days at the convention center, the first day there were over sixty thousand people, second day there were over forty, third day there was maybe about ten thousand people present. You usually do most of your business day one and day two. Made a lot of contacts for the city and for the county. As, as Mary reported out a couple of years ago, and I will greatly second it, the, the conversation when you're talking to a potential business, to have someone from the Chamber of Commerce present and someone from the city council present, absolutely blew those people away. They, they commented over and over as we, as we talked to different ones. It, you know, it is so great to see a city council member here, it's so great to see the commitment to that. And it, and it just, it's that balanced message of, you know, 'cause if you think about it, you know, the chamber, the economic development director for the chamber is, is supposed to be selling. You know, it, it, it's the used car salesman out there selling everything you possibly can. Come in here, come in here, bring your business, bring your business. But, you know, from the perspective of the city council, that's not what we're doing. We're really talking about this is what, how business friendly the city is, you know, the opportunities that we have. I mean, we have it built, you know, we have utility, substances, and discounts and abatements on new businesses. We have opportunities if someone's gonna purchase a currently vacant property. You know, there's lots of different opportunities with that, and, and over and over, these businesses were, you, you know, I, I'd much rather work with somebody who's willing to, to commit a city council person or someone from the city to be a part of that. And I know we had, the city of Kingdom City had similar, you know, experiences, having, having them there also. Probably walked away with three or four really solid connections. These things take a couple of years. I mean, you know, if you can imagine trying to bring a business in anywhere, it'll take a couple of years. We're not gonna, we're not gonna have a business come in next week because of something I did last week. But it's setting those examples. Shoe Sensation came here from one of these trips. You know, it was one of these trips that made the connection with that business, and a year and a half later, they opened their doors here. I mean, it's that type of stuff. You know, the unfortunate side to some of this is the expense. Many businesses, especially retail and fast food, it's franchise based. So while, you know, ABC Hamburgers may, from a corporate view, they may look and say, yep, perfect community, perfect size, you've got the right traffic, oh, you've even got, you know, these two or three properties that, that would be great, and we know that if it's, you know, if it, if this property's, if, if our business sits beside this business, we do great, this is exactly where we wanna be, but, oh, by the way, it's a fifty thousand dollar franchise fee. You know, you have to have that investor in the community that's willing to, to invest in that franchise fee, invest in some of that building, invest in some of that stuff to also bring. You know, just, just corporate for ABC Hamburgers can't say, oh, well, we'll put one there. There's gotta be some investment there, too, so that's, and that's where the chamber exec and the economic development director, and that's where these companies come in. They've got brokers that work the other side of it trying to find those investors.
I think for our investment to send you there was very worthwhile when you compare that against some of the other projects we've done to try to stimulate this thing, so, yeah, thank you for doing that.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Learned a lot.
Before you adjourn, Mayor? We've never done this, I don't think, since I've been on the council, but during a work session, or you and Mr. Johnson talk about it, can we have during the course of the year, bring in all the boards to meet the council, and so you can just build a million on? I know you gave us a list of names, but just, I've never met all.
Meet some of the folks.
Very good suggestion.
I know Mayor Benton created the, the Christmas, you know, event to invite all those folks out, and we do do that, and I hope to continue that. I'm gonna have to teach my wife how to make cookies, I think.
Oh, yeah, can't beat that one. Francis cookies, yeah.
But, yeah, that's not a bad idea.
It was just a thought because, because like the, first year board, they probably don't do too much, and I'm not saying because we don't have that big issues, but it'd be nice just to meet everybody in the council and know what board they own.
Good idea.
Yep, very good, we'll talk about that. So I do have three official announcements that are on the agenda. The MML Annual Electoral Officials Training will be June seventh, sixth and seventh in Columbia. For those who are registered, the next meeting, city council will be held Tuesday, June eleventh. We would have a work session at that one at six thirty. Regular session to follow at seven. And then the final announcement, the MML Annual Conference will be held September eighth through eleventh in St. Charles. If you have not made your final reservations, do you have any outstanding?
I actually have everyone's stuff, but the thirty-first is the last day you have to make changes. So if you need to make any changes, get with me by then, please. I think that's it.
And we do not have a need for executive session, so I'd call.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.